The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. This evening, Jeff Humphrey of the Parkside Baptist Church will lead us in our invocation.
If I may, Minister Alliance would like to remind everybody that this coming Thursday is the National Day of Prayer and we won't be able to have our big gathering at the park. So, the Park Avenue Church of Christ, Parkside, and then Mount Olive Baptist Church will be hosting noon prayer gatherings for our city and would love to have you all invited to be a part of that, too. Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you. Lord, when I think about Jesus, it's said that he grew as a young boy in wisdom, in stature, in favor with God, in favor with man. And we thank you that there was a place where he could grow up and do that called Nazareth, Lord. We thank you for Denison. We thank you. It's a place that we can grow up in wisdom, in stature, in favor with God, in favor with man. And we pray that...we thank you for our city leaders that have continued to help us and to create that opportunity for us in so many ways. We pray that tonight would just be an extension of that, Lord, that your wisdom would pour over them, Lord, and that Denison would be a bright light at the top of Texas, Lord, a place of wisdom, of stature, a place in favor with God, and a place in favor with man. We love you and we thank you for this city and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
This evening, we are honored to have the under-12 Lady Bubs Girl Soccer Team. I have to tell you a little bit about this group of young ladies. They are tied for first place with the 12-year-olds. Now bear in mind, they're under 12, they're undefeated, and they're going to be playing Saturday for the championship game. So if you get a opportunity, be sure you wish them good luck. And they're going to lead us in our place this evening. Anytime you're ready, ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor my Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one unit invisible.
Thank you, ladies. All right. We are honored to have with us this evening Margaret Summery, and she is going to make a presentation to the city.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk to you this morning or this evening. It's been a Monday. Twenty years ago, the city of Denison passed a resolution to join with other cities working together for the benefit of all to form the Cities Aggregation Power Project. It's to help cities save money on electric bills. Fast forward, and the Cities Aggregation Power Project and a group called the South Texas Aggregation Project merged together in 2011 and we became TCAP with the same purpose of finding energy rates that save our members' money and in turn save tax dollars. With 168 members, we're the largest organization of our kind in Texas. As we begin our 20th year, we want to thank our founding members, those members that have been with us since the beginning and who have continued to be leaders in working together. On behalf of the Board of Directors and myself, I want to present this to the city of Denison and thank you for your membership in TCAP.
Thank you. We have a number of proclamations this evening. There are a lot of clauses and people that need to be recognized this week. And if Harry Limming and Chief Mike Gudgel would join me. This is National Mental Health Week. You know, mental health issues are often called the invisible disease. Often, we see people who are struggling with mental health and we have no idea that they have those struggles. And so I think it is appropriate tonight for us to raise awareness of mental health so that we can focus our energies on helping those people who go through these struggles that are so devastating in many ways to the person and to the family. Whereas, mental health is an essential part of overall individual health, and it is vital that every individual, family, and organization in the community understand its importance. And whereas, it is essential to eliminate disparities in mental health treatment by promoting well-being of all, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, language, place of residence, or age, and to ensure equality of access, delivery of services, and improvement of outcomes. And whereas, every individual must have the opportunity for and the access to early and appropriate mental health screening, assessment, and referral to quality treatment. And whereas, it is important to conduct such screening, assessment, and referral in our local criminal justice system, our private and community mental health, substance abuse, and primary care settings. And whereas, adults and children with mental illness must have ready access to the best treatments, services, and supports leading to recovery, and diverse and quality mental health workforce is essential to these services. And whereas, the state of Texas designated Texoma Community Center as the local mental health authority intended to be a vital component and strategic partner to all stakeholders and service providers who make up the local continuum of mental health services in the Texoma region. And whereas, the Texoma Health Foundation partners with the Meadows Foundation to support the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute across the state of Texas. And whereas, the Texoma Federal Health Leader GIP team formed in 2017 brings together local community stakeholders from many agencies and many areas of education, healthcare, business, government, law enforcement, judiciary, nonprofit management, mental health, nonprofit funding, and family advocacy to collaborate toward much-needed local solutions to concerns such as access to care, jail diversion, stigma reduction, inequitable funding. Now therefore, I, Janet Goff, Mayor of the City of Denison, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 to be Mental Health Month. Signed, Janet Goff, Mayor, Denison, Texas. Mike, would you like to say something?
You know, mental health is a big issue in our criminal justice system. And we have partnered with the Texoma team, and it's very important for us as a police department that we stay in tune with what is trending because a lot of our customers are consumers of mental health needs. So I'm just proud that Mayor and City Council and us as a city are involved in this and am very proud to be part of the board and honored, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. I just want to say it is very important because here's what I can tell you, and this is my story. We're all dealing with it. You are, you are, I am, you are, you are, you are. And I appreciate your support. We're either dealing with it internally or we're dealing with a family member or we have a friend. And we're saving lives, guys. And so your support really means a lot to us, so thank you.
Thank you for coming. In addition, tonight, we're going to recognize some folks that make a difference in our city. So if Chris Wallantine and Fanchin Sterns would join me down here. You know, nobody, unless you're part of city government, realizes just exactly what the city clerk and the assistant city clerk do on a regular basis. The truth of the matter be known, they keep us going. So this is National Municipal Clerk. We call them city clerks or city secretaries. They're all made the exact same thing. So I would like to recognize these two very talented and very busy women that do so much for our city from a day-to-day basis. So whereas, the office of the municipal clerk, also known as city clerk or city secretary, is a time-honored and vital position in local government, which exists throughout the world and is the oldest among public servants, with mention of the position in the Bible and Greek and Roman history. And whereas, 2021 is the 52nd anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week, which was initiated in 1969 on a worldwide level. In 1984, President Ronald Reagan was the first U.S. president to proclaim the first week in May as Municipal Clerks Week. And whereas, the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing body, and the agencies of government at other levels. Municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all and to uphold constitutional government and the laws of their state and city with a high standard of integrity and stewardship. And whereas, municipal clerks provide a multitude of services to their community and local government, including conducting elections, recording and preserving records, providing information and services to citizens, and codifying legislative activities of the governing body. I told you they keep us going. And whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state provisional county and international professional organizations. And whereas, the city of Denison city clerk, Chris Wallantine, and deputy city clerk, Fanchin Sterns, continually strive to provide outstanding service to our community and local government on a daily basis, protect resources, provide transparency in all aspects of local government, and preserve our heritage while planning for our future. Now, therefore, I, Janet Goff, as mayor and on behalf of the city council, do recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our city clerk, our deputy city clerk, and all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their dedication to the communities they represent. Signed, Janet Goff, Mayor, City of Denison, Texas. Ladies? You want me to step over there, Mayor?
That'd be nice.
I can't just spread out. All right, we have one more before we get down to our real business. This proclamation honors our silent heroes. We have public servants who work tirelessly every day to serve the citizens of this community. And sometimes, while public works, they're never seen except when you have a 100-year winter event, and then they're seen everywhere. We, you know, we have service by our police and our fire department. Daily, they are serving to protect us, our person, and our property. We also have teachers who give so selflessly to those that we allow them to have, and that's our children, which are our future. So I would like the opportunity to...if anybody will come up here, would like to recognize all those that serve as public servants. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Their tireless efforts are especially critical today during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, public employees take not only jobs but solemn oaths. And whereas, many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, aid workers, healthcare professionals, intelligence officers, and others, risk their lives each day to serve to the Constitution, in service to the Constitution and people of the United States and around the world. And whereas, public servants, including teachers, utility workers, social workers, sanitation workers, nurses, building officials, laborers, computer technicians, customer service representatives, and countless other occupations, day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And now, therefore, I, Janet Goff, Mayor of the City of Denison, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens that May 2nd through 8th, 2021, is public service recognition. Signed, Janet Goff, Mayor, Denison, Texas. All right. You want to say anything, Amy?
Well, just that I represent a small part of Team Denison. I know you're well aware of the quality of folks that we have on our team, and we're grateful that you would recognize them in this way. So we'll be making some other efforts this week to show them some love, but this is our kickoff, so thank you very much.
All right. At this point in our meeting, time is set aside for any citizen who wishes to speak regarding any agenda item listed tonight. Ms. Wallantine, do we have anybody that wishes to speak? Therefore, there will be no public comments. The next agenda item, Consent Agenda. Before we address the Consent Agenda, we need to remove Item C. It will not be considered by the council this evening and may be placed on a future agenda item if required. So the motion to...for the Consent Agenda will need to be without Item C.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the...approve the Consent Agenda except for Item C. As it is written.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro-Tim Doty and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant 2019 Annual Action Plan to allocate $143,572 of the Third Franche of Community Development Block Grant Program, Coronavirus Response Fund CDVG-CV3, to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I believe the agenda caption is fairly self-explanatory, but we're fortunate in Denison that under the third round of funding through the CARES Act, the city's been allocated a little over $143,000 that we can provide to our public service agencies. This requires, though, thus, to formally amend our 2019 action plan. This was reviewed by the Community Development Steering Committee on April 21st, and they have recommended approval. Mayor, we anticipate, as you've probably heard in the past, that our primary agencies are HEAT, the Texas Family Shelter, and probably the Boys and Girls Club that will be reaching out to you. When their requests come in, the actual applications and approval will come back before this body for final approval. Mayor, this is a public hearing. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Webb? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the substantial amendments adopting the Community Development Block Grant 2019 Annual Action Plan to include the proposed CDVG-CV3 budget to fund public services and administration of eligible activities.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning from Single Family 7.5 SF-7.5 to Single Family 5 SF-5 on property located at the intersection of Miller Street and Holland Drive, case number 2021-036Z. Mr. Medina?
Thank you. This is item case number 2021-036Z. This is the subject property here outlined in yellow. It's at the intersection or the right-of-way intersection of Miller Street and Holland Drive. You have Miller running east to west and Holland running north to south. The prospective developer is wanting to rezone the property to SF5 to do or to be allowed to create smaller lots than what is currently permitted. Here's the zoning map. This yellow, all the yellow is Single Family 7.5. There are some multifamily zoning to the southeast of this property. I think those are duplexes. When I went by and looked at those, you can kind of see them here. Here's a survey of the property. So this rezone would consist of zoning this major tract on the east side of Holland as well as two lots to the west side of Holland. These are lots nine and 10 outlined here on the survey. And this is the proposed plan. Now, pending the rezone, the applicant will be submitting a preliminary plat for this property consisting of 20 single-family lots. In addition to, if you notice, you can see Holland Drive no longer goes all the way north intersecting with Miller. The applicant will be submitting a petition to the city to abandon that part of right-of-way so they can create a separate lot. Checking with our Public Works Department, there are no utilities there. There's no drainage or anything. It's kind of not really being utilized by the city. So in recap, the applicant's proposing to rezone the property from Single Family 7.5 to SF5. This does comply with our comprehensive plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on the 27th of April, and city staff recommends approval of the request. I'm present for any questions that you may have, and I believe the applicant is also here.
Questions from...for Mr. Medina? This is...oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
No, I was just going to ask, Bill, did we get any comment from the neighbors there?
Yes, sir. So let me see if I can pull the aerial back up. So you can see Flora running east to west here. We did get one letter of opposition, but I think we also got at least one letter of support as well.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance changing the zoning from the Single Family 7.5 zoning district to the Single Family 5 zoning district on property located at the intersection of Miller Street and Holland Drive.
There was a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning from the Commercial Zoning District C to the Single Family 5 SF5 zoning district on property located at 116 West Bond Street, case number 2021-037Z. Mr. Medina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Case number 2021-037Z. This is the subject property here. You have West Bond running east to west between North Austin, north to south, and then North Houston also running north to south. So while this is addressed as 116 West Bond, it's technically two lots, as you can see here. Sorry. Yeah, in this photo, you can see that line. So it's technically two lots. Pending this rezone, the developer will be moving forward with two single-family detached homes here at this location. It's already platted as such. And here's the zoning of the subject property. Again, it's in that pocket north of Maine and east of Austin. That's predominantly zoned commercial. However, it's been widely developed in a residential manner. So I'm present for any questions that you may have. City staff recommends approval, and the applicant is also here as well.
Questions for Mr. Medina?
Wouldn't be a meeting without one of these. Switching to commercials and everything. Someday we'll get it fixed.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Going, going, gone. There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance changing the zoning from the Commercial Zoning District C to the Single Family 5 SF5. Zoning district on property located at 116 West Bond Street.
There is a motion by Councilmember Greenleaf and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance to amend Section 28 dot 30 MF1, multifamily residential district, Section 28 dot 31 multifamily 2 residential district, and Section 28 dash 50 off-street parking and loading requirements in Chapter 28 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance of the Code of Ordinance Regarding Off-Street Parking Requirements. Mr. Webb, don't make me repeat this.
And I guess the bad news is this is going to be the first of several times that you'll be seeing me on these zoning text amendments, so I'll apologize in advance. Maybe I'll work with the city attorney and see if we can maybe add some brevity to these. Mayor, thank you. As referenced in the staff report, it's no surprise that we're seeing an uptick in our residential development. And as Bill and I work with the applicants, we try to identify areas within the zoning ordinance that maybe have become outdated, that are probably not in the best interest of the city. One of the things that came to mind very quickly is our parking requirements for a multifamily development. I feel that they may be somewhat outdated. The table that's in your packet and on the screen lists the changes we're making, for the most part, there's not that many changes to the bedroom types. While there's not many apartments with efficiency units in the new complexes, there'll probably still be some. We believe that going from one and a half spaces to one space for an efficiency unit is sufficient. For the one bedrooms, two and three bedrooms, no changes. The big difference is, is that no matter what type of bedroom types you have, the overall number of spaces is averaged at two spaces per unit. So if you have units with a preponderance of one-bedroom spaces, they're probably overparked. And with that, you just have too much concrete. It's more expense for them. I'd rather see it put into open space for that. So the biggest change is removing that average of two spaces per dwelling unit and letting each of these ratios apply per each complex. And then working with the attorney's office, we're trying to kind of migrate all of our parking standards over into one section of the zoning ordinance so it's easier for people to find these parking standards. With that, Mayor, this is a city-initiated request. It's a public hearing. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Webb? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amending Sections 28 dot 30, 28 dash 31, and 28 dash 50 in the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6, Executive Session. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter, and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551 dot 071. Conver with city attorney regarding the city manager candidates. Discuss the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of value of real estate property and public discussion of such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position, Section 551 dot 072. Update regarding the potential purchase of property within the city limits. Discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of, or to hear a complaint against a public officer or employee, Section 551 dot 074. Discuss city manager candidates. The time is 6:31, and the council is now in executive session. We ask you to please...